All right, it is 5:30 on July 10th, 2025. I'm going to call this regular meeting of the Morton County Commission to order. Our first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do a roll call. Commissioner Zach Meier.
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley.
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash.
Here.
Commissioner Morell.
Here.
And myself, Commissioner Bame. We also have Auditor Roan up here in the front table and State's Attorney Copy and Sheriff Kirkmeier in the back of the room. First item will be the approval of the agenda. And we do have one change on number four. It will not be Mark Isaacs presenting it, it will be John Psyke presenting those. Does anyone have any other changes, additions, or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, would you move to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
Been moved to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have approval of the minutes from the June 24th, 2025, regular meeting of the Morton County Commission.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the June 24th, 2025, Morton County Commission regular meeting. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the monthly bills. Commissioner Zach Meier.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would just have a couple of comments. One, there's travel bills being submitted and itinerary is not part of the package. Training syllabus is not part of the package. Those ones were sent back, all of them, except one that I could see have been back. But it's a matter of making sure that even though it's in-state travel, you have to have a reason for why you were having that motel room or why you were in that town. Otherwise, to the average citizen, if they were looking at it, it would look like it was a free weekend or free hotel rooms with absolutely no justification attached to the package. The other thing, bills that, another bill that concerned me was 150, about $150 worth of flowers that were purchased for the courthouse property and none of the flowers were taken care of. And I don't know who was to be in charge of it, but some of the flowers weren't planted and they were left on the front lawn. But basically, we lost 100 and some dollars' worth of flowers because of lack of attention. And it's really sad that those flowers were by the Veterans Wall and we're undertaking a project to rebuild the Veterans Wall. And if we can't take care of what little bit we have now, how can we justify asking people to commit to redoing that monument? I thought it was sad. But the flowers were planted or were purchased, there's no way to really get out of it. So the bills I was able to attend to up to this point, I would move for their approval.
Mr. Chairman, I knew I talked to Jake about the flowers, some of them, and I know he got some of them planted, but then they were working on the side of the courthouse and they were not able to be planted because of the work on the side of painting and the stucco.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the monthly bills and payroll. Is there any other discussion? I will make one comment. I do agree with Commissioner Zach Meier. We don't have documentation with our bills and we do have an open records request. That's where those documentation needs to be in place. As a state employee, no matter what I do, there better be a receipt with it. And county government's no different. So we need to make sure we keep those coming in the right way. Is there any other discussion? Any discussion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, then, who will communicate with the staff, the reminder to staff that that needs to be done?
Well, I mean, it's in our policy.
It is.
That's required. And so if they don't turn it in, then we just reject it and we don't pay it until it's turned in.
Yep. So when we're doing bills, if there's no documentation with them, we should turn them back.
And Mr. Chairman, this isn't like anything they shouldn't have known. Some of them are longtime employees, they know the rules. That, that, it's totally and completely uncalled for that bills keep coming into the auditor's office without the proper documentation attached.
And we, we know too, in-state travel, it's in your budget, you go and you just support the documentation with it. It's out-of-state, we've, we're asked them to come and present to us and get approval. So we're not changing anything, it's in policy. Commissioner Tocash, you had, I kind of jumped in front of you there.
Uh, yes, I was just going to say, department heads need to sign off on those. That should be taken care of before, before it gets to the commissioner level, but I'll follow up with HR and at least send a reminder out.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I think most of them were department heads that were turning in travel. So it wasn't their subordinates.
All right, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Zach Meier.
Yes.
Commissioner Morell.
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash.
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley.
Yes.
And myself, so yes, motion carries. All right, um, we do have, now, that clock is a little fast in the back of the room, but we do have a couple of public hearings listed at 6:00 and 6:15, so we will move into some budget work. If we have to, we will pause and go into our public hearings, then resume. Uh, first up tonight is Sarah Eastman with Youth Works. And it looks like she has help.
And Commissioners, that can be, Sarah did send me some documentation, it's in your budget book, and that is in tab nine under juvenile court. And so the first page there will be the overall budget for that department, and then her documentation is right behind it.
Good evening, Morton County Commissioners and Auditor Roan. My name is Sarah Eastman, and I am the Program Manager of our Youth Works Short Term Care and Assessment Center here in Bismarck. I did have Mark Heiner come with me, he is our new Executive Director. Melanie Highcamp has retired as of May 31st, so. Youth Works Shelter is the only emergency shelter for youth under the age of 18 in the community. Youth Works has been able to offer family counseling, reunification, as well as supportive services to the youth and families after discharge. Youth Works prides itself on being a safe place for young people to belong and be heard. From July 1 of 2024 to June 30 of 2025, law enforcement from Morton County, including Mandan Police Department, placed 22 youth into our shelter. This number is 20% of the total youth sheltered, and the result totaled, their stay resulted in a total of 700 hours of supervision by our staff. The availability of a 24/7 shelter for vulnerable youth in our community is crucial for their wellbeing. Our goal is to work with the youth and their families to address the underlying issues which often prevents law enforcement interventions altogether. Ultimately, having access to a safe place for youth to lay their head at night, warm food to eat, and safety is invaluable. Our budget is based on historical data and projections for the future. When law enforcement encounters a youth where it is not safe or appropriate for them to return home, our shelter is a less restrictive option than detention. Additional funding for our shelter comes from United Way federal grants and other municipalities and independent fundraising. It takes approximately $430,000 annually to run our shelter, and the amount Youth Works is asking for Morton County to provide is only 8% of that budget. In February of 2024, Youth Works opened its doors to a youth and family engagement center, providing additional services for youth and families. That center provides youth with a safe place to be during the day and early evening. With a focus on social, emotional groups, life skills, et cetera, the center is focused on preventing youth from entering the juvenile justice system while teaching them valuable life skills. As mentioned previously, staff at Youth Works strive to work with the family unit to address underlying issues that lead to system involvement. Youth Works provides family counseling, anger management education, mentoring, and other complimentary services for youth who are identified as having these needs. Youth Works thanks Morton County immensely for their continued support in the efforts to provide a safe place for the youth in our community. I will do my best to answer any further questions that you may have. Thank you.
Mark doesn't have any comments yet?
No, I'm just here to answer any questions you might have.
Six weeks in, it's a little quick, right?
I've been with Youth Works for 29 years, so.
Just as in the position. Commissioners, have any questions for Sarah or Mark?
Mr. Chairman, I do.
Yes.
Um, what impact is the, about the federal grants? Has there been any reductions? And what, how are you dealing with that?
The federal grants, there's one specific federal grant that has supported the shelter, and it's, it's called a Basic Center Program, and it's through the federal level Health and Human Services. Just yesterday, they came out with an announcement that they would have a round of funding that would be available, uh, and so we hope to compete for those grants. We know that typically, they, they give us 60 days to write that grant. We've been successful in writing for and receiving that grant. They've just given us 14 days to work on that, and so we'll be looking for partners to sign MOUs and get that written and submitted. Our budget is counting on receiving that and having that continue to be a part of the supportive funding for that. If we don't receive that, then obviously, we're going to have to do a lot more fundraising locally and looking for more support from organizations like Morton County.
Mr. Chair, follow-up or not?
Sure.
So that grant, what's the cap on that grant? What's the historical for the facility?
The historical is 198,000 for that, and the cap for the state is 250,000. So we're going to write for 250,000. I don't know whether or not we may encounter challenges because of the, there's the statewide cap, and then there's an overall cap. So the overall cap is 350,000. Uh, it's one of those examples where our state set aside, because we're a more rural state, is smaller than what that maximum amount is that you could apply for. So we do plan on applying for the $250,000 for that. And that'll allow us to use it for prevention and shelter services to support what it is that we're doing. Our hope is that we can gain that full $250,000 that will allow us to do more prevention-based services, and if need be, if, if the shelter is short, then it can also help cover that.
And provided the application gets submitted within the time constraints, wins the award?
Uh, we would find out about that the end of September, and those funds would continue from October 1.
Is there any match required?
There is, a 10% match that's required, and so any funding that we can receive here, we will use as match for that.
Mr. Chairman, is the request for 34,298 or is it for 234,298?
34,000. Oh, although we'll take 234.
Well, it's because it says shelter care on here.
Oh, no, shelter care is the YCC.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's just comparing if they were to have to go to detention instead of coming to, to our shelter. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions for Sarah or Mark? Good. Jackie's good.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bachmeier, Morton County Water Board, are you ready?
Uh, so the Water Board is the very last tab in your budget book, number 39.
They save the best for last.
Good afternoon, Chairman Bame, members of the Commission, Auditor Roan. My name is Wade Bachmeier, I'm the Chairman of the Morton County Water Resource District. The district submitted the 2025 budget, year-to-date 2025, and also the proposed 2026 budget, along with balance sheets showing reserves for the district. Before I get into that, I want to cover just a couple of things. And that is some of the projects, major projects that, that the district has been working on. One of them is Missouri West Water. Just for clarification, Missouri West Water does not receive any taxing, tax dollars, but Morton County Water Resource District oversees Missouri West. Conversely, Missouri West does not pay the Morton County Water Resource District any funds. So even though we're one entity, it's two umbrellas, there has never been, is not, and never will be any co-mingling of funds. So on Missouri West, we've got three major projects going on. One is the master meter on the north side of Mandan that needs to be replaced and upgraded to provide additional supply going north of Mandan. That would be, we're hoping in the year 2026, we can have that replaced. Then the, what's called the Flasher Tower, I like to call it the Fallon Tower in between St. Anthony and Flasher. That tower has been historically a problem for Missouri West. And then, not only has it been a problem, but a year or two ago, somebody decided to use it as target practice for their high-powered deer rifle. So anyway, that's probably going to be a 27, 28 project, but the planning has to start now. And then the third major project would be the, would be a storage tank at the intersection of 1806 and County Road 140. Our previous manager was astute enough to look into the future and see that there was probably going to be a need for a storage tank in that area, so he did secure the land many years ago. So that land is already secured. So then, as far as the board is concerned, we've got two major things going on. One is the installation of some mixers for Harmon Lake. Over the years, we've quite often had blue-green LJ problems, so we have been visiting with the company for the last year, year and a half, and they are in the process, probably will be installing three mixers on Harmon Lake next week. And the intent of those mixers is to alleviate or eliminate any blue-green LJ problems. And then the other major project that Morton County Water Resource District is very involved in is the Missouri River Joint Water Board EAE program. Just a quick update on that, and for Commissioner Tocash's benefit, the EAE program is something that the Missouri River Joint Water Board has initiated, and it's been running now for, going on three years. And that is educate, advocate, and engage. We want to educate the people in North Dakota on what we have in terms of the Missouri River and its beneficial use to the state of North Dakota, and more importantly, what we have to lose to downstream states and other basin states. The A stands for advocate, advocate for the use of Missouri River water for the beneficial use of North Dakota, and then, of course, engage everyone. That program appeared to start out really slow, but over the last year, we've gained a lot of steam. We've got a lot of entities and counties within the state that are asking for presentations, and now we are getting requests from out-of-state for presentations on, on the Missouri River. So we're very happy how that is progressing. Getting into the budget. The board was able to keep our budget level again. We've succeeded in doing that for the last several years, primarily because we've not had any major project revamps or, or upgrades that have been needed. So I am knocking on wood, but I am suspecting that one of these years, we're going to get slammed with some upgrades. We're still comfortable leaving the budget for 26 level because we have built up some reserves, so I, I think we'll be okay. Nonetheless, I just wanted to bring that up. Major items on the budget, salaries, 45,000, that is budgeted. We very seldom hit that because a lot of the board members will do things on a voluntary basis as opposed to submitting invoices. Legal dues, we're not sure what's going to happen there. Our board attorney, Tom Baer, has decided to retire, so we don't know if our legal fees are going to increase. I would, I would guess they won't, will not decrease. The Missouri River coordinator expense, about three-fourths of the way down, that is in connection with the EAE, Educate, Advocate, and Engage program. And then the, further down, the maintenance reserves, that is an amount of money that the joint board needs, not the joint board, that Morton County Water Resource District needs to put in reserves every year for major upgrades of, of Harmon Lake. As part of the funding from the federal government and the state of North Dakota, when Dam Site 6, Harmon Lake was built, every year, we have to put reserves away, and we have to increase those reserves each year based on inflation. That's why that number is increasing every year. And then the Harmon Lake maintenance, the 15,000, a good portion of that will help cover the mixers that are in the process of being installed. With that, I will yield for any questions.
Mr. Chair, I got a question for Mr. Bachmeier on the mixers. How will those work? Is that just sitting at the bottom, ensuring it?
Chairman Bame, Commissioner Morell, there are solar-powered mixers that pull water in from anywhere from a five or 10, 10-foot depth, depending on the depth of the water. And what it does is it basically circulates the water. I'm a layperson, so I can't give you the technicalities of it, but basically, it, it, it pulls the high nutrient water off the bottom and exposes it to the sun to dissolve and oxygen, oxenagate, put oxygen into the water.
Okay. Is it, on the Bark Board, I know we've had conversation about all that, the high nutrients really settle down towards, and that causes enhanced reactions.
That's correct. The company we're working with, their primary focus is on, on lagoons, and, and they've had, they've been very successful in the areas where they've installed these on lagoons. So because of the size of Harmon Lake, they, they thought that, they, they said one of them definitely would not take care of the problem, but three of them would. And thankfully, that company is local, they're located in Bismarck and Wilton, so they were able to, they were willing to work with the board and provide us a very reasonable deal on these because, number one, it's close by, and number two, they've never done anything like this on a lake. So they wanted, they wanted this to happen just to, to monitor it and, and see if that's another avenue they can use to expand their business.
Hopefully create a best practice.
Correct. The FSP, it's called an FSP monitor, which monitors dissolved oxygen and blue-green LJ and some other things, has already been installed, was installed last week. It's, it's on a float right out from the kayak, I was up there this afternoon. It's very unobtrusive, and it, there's a program, an app for our phones, that we can look it up, and if I actually knew what it says, I could tell you what's going on out there. So I'm going to need some education before I understand what's on the app.
Sure. And then, one more yet is, will this be buoyed around? Is there any, any concerns for the lake users?
We ran that up and down the flagpole with our attorney, with an ender, went back and forth, around and around, and any potential problem, complication that anybody could think of has been, has been addressed. Like anything, anything can happen, but at this point in time, everything that, that has been brought up, we've addressed to the best of our ability.
Okay. I'll be looking forward to it.
Yeah, I will too. Actually, the, the mixers themselves will be pulled out each year and, and put on, on the bank because one of the concerns was potential soft ice for ice fishing if, if they're, if they're operating during the winter. So we addressed that by saying we're just, they're just going to have to come out each fall and be put in in the spring. The units, the three mixer units are there right by the shop building. If you, if you're driving by, take a look at them, they look like three aliens, and they're operated solar, by solar, and, and that's how they mix the water.
Thank you.
Who, Wade, who's going to take them, who's going to put them in and out then?
The company, it's called.
The company will do it?
It's called Sunflow.
Okay.
And we worked all that right into the whole contract when we, when we negotiated this.
Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Bachmeier? I'm seeing a bunch of no's.
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. This board, with the amount of expertise on this board, still gets the most done and can squeeze a budget to the end to complete their projects. And they are definitely a credit to Morton County with what they're able to accomplish with minimal resources.
Chairman Bame, Commissioner Zach Meier, I definitely appreciate hearing that.
Mr. Chairman, I was looking at your balance sheet, Wade. So the 30,000 that, for the Harmon Lake maintenance account, or no, the, um, resource account, where, where does that go?
You're talking the reserves?
Yes.
That should be the account, it should be a Dakota Community Bank account sheet.
Okay, is that the one for 21,000, not 195?
Uh, no, actually, it should be a lot higher than that by now. Let me see if I can find that. We've been, we've been paying that in. Okay. Um, balance sheet as of June 20, 2025, about a fourth of the way down, it says Dam Site 6 Savings Account.
Okay.
That's, oh, that's what was put in. You want to know the balance.
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley, you caught me off-guard.
Sorry. So there's a reserve, no. There's a Harmon Lake account under Dakota Community Bank for 209,000?
Okay, where do you see that?
It's on the second line under your bank CDs.
Yes, there you go.
That's it?
Yes, ma'am.
Harmon Lake Operating and Maintenance.
Okay.
H-L-O-N-M.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to compliment Mr. Bachmeier as well on, on the detail that you've provided here. It's greatly appreciated. It's greatly appreciated.
Well, Chairman Bame, Commissioner Tocash, thank you very much, but I had some help. And I'm certainly willing to admit that. Brenda Winkler is our Secretary Treasurer, and she keeps us, she keeps us on track.
Thank you, Wade.
Thank you.
Yeah. John, all right, it is six o'clock, so is there any lead-in to our public hearing?
Yes, sir, I have a little background on it.
Let's get, let's do the background, and then I'll open the public hearing. Didn't want to start with the lead-in before six o'clock either, so.
No, understood.
Good evening, Commissioners and Auditor Rone. Before you this evening with a special assessment, the Prairie Ridge Estate Subdivision Special Assessment District. The residents of Prairie Ridge Estate Subdivision have submitted the required petition signatures to establish a special assessment district. The resolution of necessity was approved, and a public hearing will be held this evening. The notice of the hearing was published in the Mandan News thirty days prior to the public hearing, and was published twice as required by North Dakota Sentry Code. A courtesy letter was sent to each resident and was mailed on May 28, 2025. Upon approval of the special assessment district, it will be added to our plan. And additional subdivisions are going through the same process. And I would expect to have the, if everything goes as planned, we will advertise for bidding tomorrow and open bids on August 6th. So at this point, we are ready for the public hearing. We, part of the letter that I had sent, it explained the protest process and period. And as of the deadline for submitting written protests, which was Tuesday, the 8th, we had not received any for this subdivision. So with that, if you have any questions, I would be willing to answer those, or we can go to the public hearing.
Commissioners, have any questions for John? Okay. Seeing none, I will open the public hearing for the Prairie Ridge Estate Subdivision Special Assessment. Do we have any public comment for this special assessment? Any public comment? Third call, any public comment? How about online? I know we do have one other than security, if they wish to comment on this one. Not seeing anything. Last call in the room. Any public comment for Prairie Ridge Estate Subdivision Special Assessment? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public comment.
All right, I will add this when you get done voting. If you wanted to proceed with that.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions, comments, concerns, anything?
Just a little bit more background. This is Sommer Drive, which is west of the Ansel Acres, which was approved at the previous meeting. And this is a partial reconstruction because it has far exceeded its useful life. And then we'll overlay it with, as far, part of the project, so.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready for motion?
I am.
Okay, would move to approve the Special Assessment District for patching overlay with hot batuminous pavement the roads in the Prairie Ridge Estate Subdivision Project Number 2589.
Second.
It's been moved to approve the Special Assessment District for hot mixed batuminous patching and overlay of the roads in the Prairie Ridge Estate Subdivision. Uh, where was the project number again?
Two-five-eight-nine.
Two-five-eight-nine. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Do a roll-call vote on that. Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Morel?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries.
All right. The next one is at six-fifteen, so if you wanted to hear some abatements.
It's about six minutes, five after, actually. So if you wanna, we will do some abatements, and then we'll move forward, see how far we get.
Okay, I've only got a couple for you tonight, so we should be able to move through these pretty fast. They both come from the city of Mandan. They are both corrections to residences. So the first one is abatement seven-one-two-five through seven-one-two-seven. This is to correct square footage for a house. This is for twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve abatements number seven-one-two-five through seven-one-two-seven for reassessments as per the set.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve abatement seven-one-two-five for 2023, seven-one-two-six for 2024, and seven-one-two-seven for 2025 to correct square footage of residents in the city of Mandan. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries.
Okay, second one is very similar. It's abatement seven-one-two-eight through seven-one-three-zero. This is to correct square footage and also adjust the basement footage. Again, it's for twenty years, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five.
Mr. Chairman, move we approve abatement number seven-one-two-eight, seven-one-two-nine, and seven-one-three-zero for the purpose of correcting records?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve abatements seven-one-two-eight for 2023, seven-one-two-nine for 2024, and seven-one-three-zero for 2025 for correction of records. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Okay. And my final item is to request for the implementation of Senate Bill 2367. This requires all counties now to have a schedule of modifiers and to apply those to agricultural property. So what I'm seeking tonight is to form a committee, preferably using farmers throughout the county. At least two. I could also do four with a committee of five. I would obviously serve on this committee as well. The purpose of this committee will be to form a recommendation on those modifiers as far as which ones and the percentage that off that those would apply to ag land, and then bring that back to the Morton County Commission, because ultimately you guys gotta make the final call on that. The time clock is ticking on this a little bit. We have to submit these modifiers to the state for approval in October, so that we need to get this all done and have you guys approve it before that date. Then obviously, we have to have an application period for the farmers to apply for these. That all has to be done before March, because in March I have to set my final values for the cities in preparation for their Boards of Equalization in April. So it seems like there's quite a bit of time left, but actually, the clock is ticking very fast on this. So I would hope to form this committee and have a recommendation back within the next couple of months so we can meet that October deadline.
So you'd need approval to establish a committee tonight, and you're looking for names too, I guess, if you really want.
Yeah, mostly I need, well, approval so you guys know what's going on, is kind of why I brought it to you. But I also need your guys' help in finding names. I know Ray Morel has already discussed one person. But it would be nice to get them throughout the county, like I said, at least two. But I could also take four and make that work as well if we needed, if we wanted more people involved.
Mr. Chairman, ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, quick comment.
Yes.
What happened to our soils committee that we had several years ago?
That's before my time.
Well, didn't you serve, I thought?
Yes, I did. I don't know what happened to Commissioner Zachmeyer. I served on that committee, I don't know. I don't remember the names.
If there's a record, there should be a record of the names somewhere. But, Mr. Chairman, I think that would be the best place to start with picking names. And I'm hoping that Commissioner Buckley would be willing to serve on this committee. I know the time is tight. But between the soils committee that we had to have how many years ago and this, I definitely believe that Commissioner Buckley is the most capable of serving on this committee also of everybody that is up here.
I would be very much in favor of resurrecting the soil committee. To me, these are decisions that should be made not by the tax director, but by this soils committee, and then have that recommendation come to the commission. I'm more than willing to serve on that soil committee. But I don't think this should be a unilateral decision by the tax director when we're starting to get into these things.
No, and you might have some on the soils committee that don't want to participate anymore or are no longer able to participate. And then some of the new names that get popped up are where you would filter in. But one suggestion I would have, and we talked about just a little bit beforehand, but is to use our extension agent as even a advisor, even if he doesn't have a vote. Jaden is very well-versed in NRCS with, when he was in Nebraska. And so for him to be involved in that and then know what's going on through our county and how things are done would be very important for him as well as for you.
Absolutely.
So I think he'd be a good advisor, if you don't use him as anything more than that.
Or else Commissioner Bame is somebody from soil conservation, not the district, but they're, they have soils people up there as well.
Yep. Just suggestions.
I'm just suggesting, you know, I guess I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure who's up there right now. So, okay.
Yeah, the biggest thing to get across with the modifiers is it does not change the overall level of the assessments we have to have.
So when you push down with modifiers over there, you push up with.
Yep, the other one over there.
So that's.
Still gotta balance out.
Don't get crazy with them. Keep them simple.
Yep.
Okay, Commissioner Morel, you asked if I was ready for a motion, I think. Anybody else have any comments? Any discussion?
I move that we authorize the Tax Equalization Office to establish a committee, not to exceed five people, to collaborate with the Director of Tax Equalization in drafting recommendations for Morton County Commission on purposes of creating a schedule of modifiers to be used to adjust agricultural property assessments within Morton County and directions regarding how the modifiers will be applied by the assessors.
I'll second. Either one of us. Thank you, Paul. It's been moved and seconded, I won't try to restate the whole motion.
Up to five people.
Yeah, up to five people for this committee. Please give that to Auditor Rone so that she has the correct language when it comes out. Is there any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, John.
Okay, thank you.
Six-thirteen. Let's see. My phone says fourteen. Yeah, we're gonna have, John, you wanna start? It's six-fourteen on the clock, so you can start with the preliminary information on this one.
Okay, the second one this evening is the Yellow Rose Estates and Howland Wolf Subdivision Special Assessment District. The residents of Yellow Rose Estates and Howland Wolf Estates Subdivisions have submitted the required petition signatures to establish a special assessment district. The resolution of necessity was approved, and we're having, holding a public hearing this evening. The notice of the hearing was published in the Mandan News thirty years, thirty years, thirty days prior to the public hearing and was published twice as required by the North Dakota Sentry Code. A courtesy letter was sent to each resident and was mailed May 28th of 2025. Upon approval of this special assessment district, it will be added to our plan. And as I said previously, we'll be looking at advertising tomorrow and then going forward with accepting bids on August 6th. So if you, I'd be open to any questions you may have.
John, what's the street name again?
It's, it's.
Yellow Rose.
Yellow Rose.
And Howland Wolf.
Yellow Jacket.
Yellow Jacket.
Yellow Jacket?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions for John before we open it?
Okay, this, the part about the protest that goes in the hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you did not.
No, I, thank you. This one, there was the, in the letter that I sent out to everyone, it included the process for protesting and also advised of the public hearing this evening as far as time and location. And as of July 8th, which was Tuesday, at five o'clock, we had not received any formal protest. Written protest.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Jackie.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions before I open the public hearing? All right. It is exactly six-sixteen. I will open the public comment hearing for the Yellow Rose Estates and Howland Wolf Subdivision Special Assessment. Are there any comments from the public in the room? Any public comments? Any public comments? How about online? Still have the same gentleman online? The mic's not turning off a mute, so I'm assuming there's no comments there. And one last call, any comments from the room for the Yellow Rose Estates and Howland Wolf Subdivision Special Assessment? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Okay, Commissioners, any questions? Or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the Special Assessment District for patching overlay with hot batuminous pavement the roads in the Yellow Rose Estates and, for the roads in the Yellow Rose Estates and Howland Wolf Estates Subdivisions, Project Number 2588.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Special Assessment District for patching overlay with hot mixed batuminous pavement for the roads in the Yellow Rose Estates and Howland Wolf Estates Subdivisions, Project 2588. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll-call vote. Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
Commissioner Morel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries.
And with that, that will make our, I think we have four of them now. And we have our plans ready to go. We are gonna advertise tomorrow and accept bids on the 6th. And with the amount of work that is not happening in the Bismarck-Mandan area as opposed to what's happened the last few years, we've had a lot of interest in putting these together. And so I think we'll get some very favorable bids. And we can go forward. We'll have a completion date of October 15th. So we should have everything done and wrapped up this fall.
Good deal.
So.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, a quick question on the special assessment that we rejected and make it. Did they redraw it, have they?
They've requested two different petitions. I've sent both of them, have not received any feedback since. So.
Did what we could right now.
Yeah, this would be the time to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure. It's technically, it's pavement, just pavement, because it's gravel right now, so.
Mr. Chair, we have Mr. Saiki repeat the question for the record.
Oh, the motion was patch and overlay, it's asphalt pavement, hot mixed pavement.
I'm sorry, it said that in my motion on the paper, so that's my fault, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. That was what was written in the suggested most motion.
Right, understood, understood.
On both of them.
And we do have, of the four, we do have some patching, we have some reconstruction, we have overlay, we have new pavement. So we have a whole broad range of items, so. And after we accept bids on the sixth, then we'll take a look at those and we'll break them down as far as each subdivision and compare to what we had included in the resolution of necessity. I anticipate them all being probably slightly less or maybe even less than what the resolution of necessity was because of the combining of everything, so.
And the chip seal is included too, correct?
The chip seal is included in the special assessment and it will be applied three years after the completion, but they will not be assessed until the chip seal is completed in three years.
Okay.
Don't see any further questions.
For the charges on that per landowner, were they based on, is that per lot?
Per, per lot is how we have it. Per lot, the question is how is it being assessed once the project is complete? And we have set it up and the resolution of necessity was approved based on per lot.
A lot being one acre by?
Per lot, whatever is owned by that one lot where it doesn't matter what size. It's just one lot. And then the final decision will be made by the special assessment committee, which will meet after the work is complete. And then they will determine what they feel is the fairest way to assess the, the special assessment. And then they will have their own public hearing prior to that and then make their decision as to how it will finally be assessed.
So you get one acre lot, or you get a ten acre?
It's the same amount. It's by lot.
And Mr. Chair, just to clarify that the special assessment committee is comprised of citizens of Morton County. Is not staff, it's not elected, it's resident citizens.
And Chairman, it's actually the special assessment commission.
Commission, okay.
And then they, whatever they determine is the fairest way that they feel, that recommendation comes to this board and this board makes the final ultimate decision.
Okay.
Okay. John, you're gonna present the P and Z?
I'm going to present the planning and zoning.
I appreciate that.
Sure. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to present based on the information that Natalie has prepared. And we have Mark available if there are any questions or need clarification needed. So, and you should have everything as far as maps and all that in your packet. So I am going to start with the request of Keenan and Sierra Pierce for the final plat of a short form subdivision known as Pierce subdivision and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential on approximately one point five seven acres in the northwest quarter of section six, township one thirty-five north, range eighty-one west, Morton County. The subject property is located about one mile west of highway six and about five miles south of St. Anthony. Applicant wishes to divide one residential lot from a seventy-two acre tract. Applicants are planning to drill a well. The proposed subdivision would create the third buildable lot within the quarter section. The planning and zoning recommendation was to approve the final plat of the short form subdivision and zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential.
Commissioners, have any questions on Pierce subdivision? Go for it. Mark, any comments from the developer or the contractor? Okay, nope. Pretty straightforward.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready for a motion?
Mm-hmm.
I've moved to approve the final plat of the short form subdivision known as Pierce subdivision and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential as the subdivision conforms to the regulations established in article seven of the Morton County Land Use Code and conforms to the land use priorities established in the two thousand and forty-five comprehensive plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the final plat of the short form subdivision known as Pierce subdivision and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the second one is a request from Devon Burkhardt for the final plat of the short form subdivision known as Burkhardt subdivision and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential on approximately thirteen point five one acres in the northwest quarter of section twelve, township one thirty-eight north, range eighty-three west in Morton County. The subject property is located off Lyons Road about five miles south of Cronbute Lake. Applicant wishes to subdivide two residential lots from a quarter section. One is an auditor's lot with a residence on it. The other lot would be newly created by the subdivision. Missouri West Water and Morgans Sue Power will be available to the new lot. The proposal would create the second and third buildable lots within the quarter section. The P and Z recommendation is approve the final plat of the short form subdivision and zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential.
Are you ready for a motion?
I am ready.
I would move to approve a short form subdivision known as the Burkhardt subdivision and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential on approximately thirteen point five one acres in the northwest quarter of section twelve, township one thirty-eight north, range eighty-three west, Morton County.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the final plat of short form subdivision known as Burkhardt subdivision and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the third one is a request from Rick and Kathy Stern et al. for the final plat of a long form subdivision known as Stern Fifth subdivision on approximately one hundred fifty-nine point zero seven acres in the southwest quarter of section twenty-four, township one thirty-nine north, range eighty-four west, Morton County. The subject property is located about one point seven five miles southeast of Sweet Brier Lake. All lots within the subdivision boundary currently exist. The purpose of the subdivision is to consolidate all lots within one plat for continuity of survey monument references across multiple plats. The approval of the final plat of the long form subdivision was approved by the P and, was recommended by the P and Z commission.
Mr. Chair, is this the one that came forward before we sent back planning and zoning?
It wasn't sent back.
Just denied?
No, we didn't deny this one. It was, there was another plat.
That's what I'm thinking.
Above there in the one that's kind of the, I'll call it a trapezoid plat up above the top one. We, we approved that one. And so now they're trying to put all of those into one.
Right.
That's correct, right, Mark?
Yes.
Am I saying that right?
How many properties are in there that?
There's still a fair number of individual parcels.
Yeah, how many parcels are in that area then already?
There are four in this quarter.
Which is, which is where?
What's on, what's on that plat is the whole quarter.
This, the red, the orange box, or the pink box.
Yeah, which is right here. Okay.
Got them all. Okay. I'm ready.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to request the motion to approve the Rick and Kathy Stern et al. for the final plat of a long form subdivision known as Stern Fifth subdivision on approximately one hundred and fifty-nine point oh seven acres in the southwest quarter of section twenty-four, township one thirty-nine north, range eighty-four west in Morton County to put all the lots into one plat.
Second. I'll do it. It's been moved and seconded to approve the final plat of the long, long form subdivision known as Stern Fifth subdivision. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
The fourth and final one is the request from the Lillies, Belles, thank you, Trust et al. for the final plat of the long form subdivision known as Guither Fourth subdivision and a zoning map amendment from residential to commercial for lot two only, including the vacation of alleyways on approximately seven point eight one acres in the northwest quarter of section eleven, township one thirty-five north, range seventy-nine west, Morton County. The subject property lies within the townsite of Fort Rice. Applicants wish to vacate internal right of ways and alleyways and consolidate lots into conforming lots. The result will be three residential lots and one commercial lot. There is currently a commercial lot with a bar on it. The proposal would add some acreage to the commercial lot. Therefore, a zone change is required for lot two only. The P and Z commission recommendation is to approve the final plat of the long form subdivision and zoning, and zoning map amendment from residential to commercial for lot two only.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick comment on this one. This helps clean up the lot problems in Fort Rice.
Yeah.
Some of them. Not all of them, but it definitely helps.
It's a start.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be ready for a motion if you're ready.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the final plat of the long form subdivision known as Guither Fourth subdivision and a zoning map amendment from residential to commercial for lot two only to include the vacation of alleyways as the subdivision conforms to the regulations established in article seven of the Morton County Land Use Code and confirms the land use priorities established in the two thousand and forty-five comprehensive plan.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the long form sub, the final plat of the long form subdivision known as Guither Fourth subdivision and zoning map amendment from residential to commercial on lot two only, including the vacation of alleyways. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right. I tell you, you could go sit down, John, but you're up next for the budget.
Okay. I've prepared the budget for the highway department for two thousand and twenty-six. And Commissioner Tocash and Commissioner Buckley and Chad, our road superintendent, and I sat down and talked about this last week before we submitted it. And I'm going to go through line by line. A number of the lines are the same as previous years. There are some that are some minor differences. The biggest changes and the ones that will require the most explanation are going to be under the contractors, the maintenance assist, which is six three eight six, and then equipment, which is later on on the spreadsheet. And so what I'm going to do is we'll start in the top. There are a couple items that we can adjust and the rest are highlighted in orange and those are items we cannot change because those come from the auditor that way. The first change is not really a change in overall budget dollars. It's how we're showing them and it's paid overtime. After we had the big winter, what, three years ago, where we had all that snow, we had expended so much overtime that Commissioner Linegang thought it might be a good idea to split out a portion of our overtime and record it as overtime for snow removal. And so we did. We put sixty thousand dollars for regular overtime for blading on over the weekends when the conditions were correct or whatever the case may be. And then we had forty thousand that we had dedicated for snow overtime, snow removal overtime. Well, since then, we really haven't had that much snow removal where we've used a lot of overtime. So what I have proposed doing is just putting it back into the, just the full overtime. Otherwise, we end up overrunning the sixty thousand. It looks like we're overrunning it, but in reality, if we stay under a hundred thousand, then we're still, we're still good. So I'm recommending just going back to a hundred thousand dollars for overtime and showing it in that line. And as I said, it really doesn't change the amount. It's just how it is shown on the spreadsheet.
Chairman?
Yes.
John, can I make a comment? So we really should keep that other line in here and just put a zero on it because here it looks like, here it looks like we're budgeting forty thousand dollars more than we did.
Right.
But also, I mean, just keep in mind that the two thousand and twenty-five budget instead of sixty thousand is really a hundred thousand. So we're not increasing the budget here.
No. Okay, all right, we can, and I'm open to however we need to show it. I was just wanting to get across that we've never used that line item since we had put it in. So I'm thinking we probably don't need it.
Mr. Chairman, just one more point of clarification for anyone listening in. Our current time card and accounting system, we are able to go back and break out overtime for specific uses, so.
Correct. If, if we need to find out what, you know, if we have spent all this time overtime, we can break it down and find out whether it was blading, whether it was disaster recovery, whether it was snow removal or whatever that case is. It's not like this is our only way of tracking it. It's actually more accurate to do it within our system, so.
Because your system cannot actually track regular hours too, because I have to have Brandy.
Yes.
Get me every year then total dollars spent on snow removal for a state report.
Right, even if it's not overtime, even if it's just regular snow removal. So yes, you can, we have that ability as well. So I think it's just, and that's more accurate than just trying to keep a track of it on this line item, so. Right. Anything further? Okay, the next one's consultants. We're going to maintain that. We've been using that as, for hiring consultants to do bridge design. And we're, this year so far, we haven't used a lot, but we do have a couple of consultants on, under contract. They're going to be designing a couple of bridges for us. And so that will, the seventy-five thousand is, we're maintaining that and will be within that. And I anticipate moving in, using that going forward, the same amount. That is good for two bridges at the thirty-five thousand dollar, which is the threshold that we can, we don't have to actually bid those out. Then the next one, we go down to memberships and reserve, registrations. The next three items for both memberships, registration, out of state travel and travel expense, we're increasing those for Mike, our GIS specialist to attend the Mid-America GIS conference in Omaha next September in two thousand and twenty-six. So we'll, I wanted to increase those, so, because that's one of these conferences. It's not an annual thing. So, and since he's still fairly new in the GIS world, I felt that that would be a good opportunity for him to attend and learn a little bit more and, and talk to some of his peers in other areas, other states and that sort of thing. Utilities, we're going to maintain. Postage, maintain. Mobile communications, that's our cell phone tracking and that sort of thing for our equipment, maintain that. Communications, and that, maintain that as well. The publishing and printing, I've increased that a little bit because we've been doing a little more publishing and printing, is whether it's for special assessments, whether it's to assist the planning and zoning, that sort of thing. Contractors, this is the one where I'm looking at the, the. Contractors, this is the one where I'm looking at the, the increase. And this one is a little different too because this is primarily Prairie Dog money. This is money that we'll be getting from the state. And if you look on your, there's another handout that should be in your packet as far as contractors, the maintenance assist, it's the four-three-three-six-three-eight-six. It has a listing of our projects. And I've put those in the order of priority, starting with the highest priority at the top and then going down. So if this does need to be reduced, we could start at the bottom and start dropping them off of that. The first one is the repair of the pier cap at Fort Rice. We're looking at, this is a very low volume road, so I don't want to spend money on a, on a box culvert because that's what it would take to replace it. So we're in, trying to get with, in negotiations with IBI to get that repaired because we have a split cap on it. The morgue bridge, planning on that one, that's up north of town. We've been told no multiple times from the DOT that will not be funded because there's other alternatives. So I'm looking at funding that through the Prairie Dog. And then Sweetbrier Bridge, that's one of those that we have under preliminary engineering right now. That one is one of our top five that we'd like to get replaced. And beyond that, I thought to make it fit after I discussed with Auditor Rohn, there's one more down there, which is the chip ceiling for County Road one thirty-nine in Glenallin. And those would all be the ones that I would like to have approved, but using the Prairie Dog funding. And as I said on the spreadsheet, these are all subject to be verified by the auditor. If there's no money, if we've spent that money previously, now, now I know we haven't spent all of it, but some of it's been spent this year on other projects, we would just work our way up from the bottom as far as priority. So if you have any questions on those. Okay. Our next item is county bridge replacement. We're going to maintain that because that has, does a good job of covering one box culvert and all of our boxes or that, bridges that we're replacing with corrugated metal pipes. We also have a bridge south of Elmont that was scheduled to be bid next year and received an email from the North Dakota DOT. They have some money available in the twenty twenty-five fiscal year and they were looking for bridge projects that were, we had designs on the shelf and these designed for this bridge south of Elmont are ninety-five percent complete. So we're having that bid this year. And so I would have money in this replacement line item for the match for that, for next year. And software upgrades, which is based on the recommendation from NRG, we're maintaining that at the same level as past year. The office supplies, we're actually, we've had some reductions, so I'm reducing that by twenty-five hundred because we had seventeen-five last year and, and if you look back on what we spent, we really haven't spent that much and I don't anticipate it, you know, doubling it by the end of the year. So we're going to reduce that. We have our engineer supplies. I'd like to keep that. It's a very small amount in case we need some additional lath or flags or something like that for staking. Computer supplies, maintain that. Oil and grease, maintain at fifty thousand. Gas and diesel, there was some discussion we had last week. It's at six hundred and twenty-five thousand. Though, we, if you look at what we spent so far this year, you can double that because we've gotten a load of diesel fuel and a load of gasoline in the last week. So that is quite a bit more than, and the other thing is we did have a very light spring or winter. We didn't burn a lot of fuel. And so this, what we are burning is our routine gravel hauling and motor graders and things like that. So we decided after a little discussion to just maintain that at this point. Sand and salt is ten thousand dollars, maintain that because that's pretty consistent each year. We buy our salt and then mix it with the sand that we purchase. Tyran tubes, maintain that because that's been adequate the last few years. Same with cutting edges. Road stabilization, that's using our base one for some of our higher volume roads in order to try retain as much of the gravel as we can. Last year, we used a hundred thousand dollars. This year, we're going to, we'll probably buy some later in the summer, but next year we won't need nearly as much because our plan is not quite as many roads, so I'm decreasing that by twenty-five percent. Shop supplies, maintain that at twenty-five thousand. That's been kind of all over the board. We weren't too sure if, how much, if we increased it, how much we would. Safety and fire supplies, maintain that because it's been for the past years between twenty, right around twenty twenty-one. And I anticipate if anything, those costs may go up a little bit. Stock items, that's for repairs of our trucks, for our parts that we need when we do the work ourselves. And we've been, once again, it's been a good year because we haven't had to work the equipment like we have in the past, but we still do have an aging fleet, so I want to maintain that at that same amount. Asphalt for patching, keep it at the same as last year, which is reduced from the previous years because we're going to have two of our, we finished two of our most patched roads, which is the frontage road. We did that last year and then this year we're going to be doing Summit Avenue in, in Hebron, County Road one forty. And that's where we've spent a lot of money on patching over the last two, three years. Oil for sealing, we want to maintain that because we've been using right in that forty-five thousand dollar range and I don't anticipate that kind of oil actually going down, any, if any, it may go, go up in price. Bridge materials, maintain that. That's for our timber pier caps if we need them, bridge railings, things like that. Bridge material supplies, those are bolts and screws and other pieces that are required for our bridge crew to maintain the bridges and replace and repair the railings. And same with the materials. For the supplies, those are other materials that they use that are necessary. Signs, maintain the signs at our ten thousand dollars that, since we do make a lot of our signs, like to maintain that. The supplies, maintain that as well. Maintenance for the gravel, that's our gravel scoria and commercial contract hauling. Maintain that. We have our, still maintaining our two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for contract hauling and mainly because given our locations of our gravel pits, we have a lot of travel time and it takes a lot of, a lot of time to make rounds so that we can get an adequate amount of gravel to some of the areas that are on our five-year gravel plan. As you'll find out later when we do our gravel crushing, we did get a very good price this year for gravel crushing, but, so we'd like to maintain this. And then also, we do maintain a scoria lease out in the Glenallin area for the western part of the, of the county. And that's all contained in this bid line item. Shop maintenance, we've had a couple hits this year with the shop with, we had a water leak and so that required quite a bit of work to replace because it was our eight-inch water main coming into the shop. And then all of our furnaces, we have three furnaces in the shop and we had two furnaces in New Salem. And all of those are about this, were about the same age and they were all in the same level of wear and they had to be replaced. So we did all those this, this past winter. So I'm going to increase that just a little bit because we do have some other items coming up. We're a little concerned about flasher as well for maintenance. Glenallin is a much newer shop, so that's not quite the concern that that flasher is in New Salem. Culverts, we're going to maintain that because we do, we buy, we have to maintain our culvert supply and we do, do quite a, our bridge crew does quite a few replacements and whether they're the larger forty-eight inch pipes or, you know, the smaller thirty-six and twenty-fours. Asphalt patching, want to maintain that at the twenty-five thousand. We have some other areas that, where we get some areas that need some hot mix patching rather than our cold mix. Right-of-way purchase, since we're doing some of these bridges and to have them on the shelf, want to maintain the ten thousand dollars for purchasing right-of-way. The vast majority of our right-of-way involves additional right-of-way for things like guardrail and, and temporary easements. And so I'd like to maintain that so that we can continue with these projects and get the designs on the shelf and take advantage of opportunities as they arise. MPO studies, we are done with the big update for the twenty-five year planning. So cut that in, in half because we won't be pursuing that this year, paying for that. GIS, want to maintain that and the supplies. And then pavement marking, we've been seeing about a ten to twelve percent increase year over year. And so I'm looking at this year, the low bid was a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. So for next year, I bumped it up to one fifty, which is about eleven percent over what we had this year. And then the capital outlay for equipment, this is for our computer equipment. We've updated all our computers over the last two years, so they're all Windows eleven operating system. This would be for Nate's computer, for his CAD and that sort of thing. It's, I think we replaced it the first year I was here, so that would, seven years ago. So NRG recommends replacing it, replacing computers every five years. So put, put that computer on the, on the list, which is less than last year because we were finishing up the remaining computers in the office that were not Windows eleven compatible. Radio replacement, reduce this substantially. We bought the radios in January and I've submitted the request for the reimbursement for all of those. So since we have all those, once the system's up and running, we'll start installing them in our equipment and go back to our typical five thousand dollars a year to cover new radios for new equipment or anything else that we may need that for to maintain the radio system. The capital outlay for road equipment, that is for our, that's a, that is for the road equipment and that would be on the, another sheet that you have. And once again, this is in priority order with number one at the top and on down. We have number one as our Lowboy trailer. We have a nineteen ninety-eight Lowboy that we use to haul our, all of our heavy equipment. And the one thing that has moved it up in our priority over the years is we're doing a lot more non-routine repairs, a lot of welding and, because we're getting cracking in areas just because of the use this, this trailer has seen over the last twenty-seven years. So we'd like to keep that at the top. We have our motor graders. We would be purchasing, would like to purchase the two motor graders. We have one that we have, that we own and then one that is leased. And if we turn in the one that is leased, then we get the buyback of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So a motor grader currently is about five hundred and ten thousand dollars, when, which is up quite a bit from just last year and the year before. But with the two motor graders and the buyback, we'd be looking at eight hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And with this leased grader going back, then we will own all thirteen great motor graders that we have. And that's kind of been our goal for the last seven years because when I got here, the majority of our motor graders were leased. And so then we're also looking at the possibility, and we discussed this as well, that we may try going, instead of a seven years, maybe going to like a ten-year rotation on the motor graders, just so we can kind of get a little more use out of each one because we're not confined to returning them based on the lease. We'd like to get two pickups because we still have a large number of pickups that have over two hundred and fifty thousand miles. And so we'd like to add those. One snowplow truck, we are still using the vast majority of our snowplow trucks are international trucks that are, I think, are two thousand and twelve models. And it's, they're starting to be more and more costly to maintain and repair. And the other issue with them is that we're to a point now where they all have, they're the same age, they all have a similar number of hours and miles on them. So we know that if something goes wrong with one, it's a domino effect and we're looking at repairing multiple trucks that are going to have the same issues. We'd like to go with the skid steer loader, a track skid steer, about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We have two, but one, our skid steer that we have currently that is a track is, I don't remember the year, the model, but it is showing its age as well. We're having to put a lot more into it as far as repairs and, and operations. We have a side-by-side, we, in the past, we'd been using the sheriff's side-by-side, but he's been needing it. We use that for things like pulling the drag around for seeding around bridges and things like that where it's kind of, it's too tight for a tractor, but a side-by-side works well. It also works well for our, when we're doing our shoulder pulls because they'll come out and locate all the utilities. We have the flags and it's just a lot more efficient to pick up the flags that way because we have to remove them after we're done. And it's a lot easier with the side-by-side as opposed to just using a pickup and that sort of thing. And then the last one is, is just another truck, just to complement and try to phase out a lot more of the, one more of the internationals. And once again, as I said, this is prioritized, so if the items, if there's not enough for all of these items, we just start just scratching off from the bottom up and, and go from there. That would be our equipment. And then last thing is just maintain the maintenance and remodeling for the, for all the shops. So with that, I'd be open to any other questions that you may have regarding the budget.
John, look, I have in my notes from when we met, the current skid steer we have was bought in twenty fifteen.
Okay.
In case the commission would like to know, because I have that in my notes.
And those are used very heavily because we, we, we use them a lot for the bridge crew, we use them for snow removal in the winter, we use them for, on the dirt crew.
And then we would like to equip one of the motor graders.
Oh.
With a V plow.
That is correct.
Do you have that down?
I did not put that in there and I failed to mention that, but our V plows are all from the nineteen seventies. And we are, Jim, our welder, is spending a lot of time in the off-seasons welding those. He basically goes through them every spring and then if we get a real heavy snow, a heavy winter like we've had several years ago, they're bringing them in constantly.
So that would include a V plow and a blade for the one?
Correct.
And that's about fifteen thousand for that.
In addition to what's there?
No, that's included, that's a part of, yes. That is a part of, yes.
Okay.
Of the money that's there. Correct.
Yeah. The money that's showing should cover everything. I just failed to mention the details of, of the plow and the, and the V plows because, like I said, there are a lot of our V plows go back to the seventies.
Commissioners, have any questions for John at this time? I can always call you back.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
I think we're good for now, John.
All right. All right. I have one more item.
Earning your pay tonight.
Yes, it's quite different from my usual five to seven minutes. On the other side of the coin, I don't have seventy-eight pages in the packet either. The last item is, we advertised for gravel crushing and we accepted bids on Tuesday at ten o'clock. We had one bidder, we had, it was kind of surprising, I was surprised we only had one bidder because we had inquiries from three different contractors, bidders who would, who crush. And so what we, what we did was we advertised for a quantity of eighty thousand cubic yards of gravel, forty thousand yards to be crushed at the Calbear Pit and forty thousand cubic yards at the Helbling Pit. The Calbear Pit is kind of our go-to, that's one that, there's still a lot of gravel there. So whenever we are not sure where to go, we go to the Calbear Pit. Gravel's required to meet the North Dakota specs for class thirteen road gravel. The low bid was Fisher Sand and Gravel, you should have a tabulation in your packet. And for the Calbear Pit, they bid seven dollars and ninety-five cents per cubic yard for a total of three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars out of that pit. And then out of the Helbling Pit, they bid seven dollars and fifteen cents and that was for a total of two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars out of that pit. Last year, we had Fisher as our low bid and they bid eight dollars and fifteen cents for crushing out of the Calbear Pit. And then with that, we do have our royalty price of two dollars and fifty cents, that is on top of that. So forwarded the bid results to the road commission, they reviewed and they all concur in the recommendation that we approve this bid and enter into a contract to get this crushed. And this is a budgeted item. And with that, I'd be open to any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? If not, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the bid from Fisher Sand and Gravel for forty thousand cubic yards at seven ninety-five per yard, for three hundred and eighteen thousand total. And for forty thousand cubic yards from Fisher Sand and Gravel at seven fifteen dollars a cubic yard from the Helbling Pit, first one from the Calbear Pit, excuse me, for a total from the Helbling Pit of two hundred and eighty-six thousand. So the crushing would be six hundred and four thousand total. Then we, we should include royalties in there as well, two hundred thousand dollars for royalties. So the total for everything is eight hundred and four thousand dollars.
Which would fit within our budget, including the Scoria, the commercial, you know, contract hauling and all that. So, yeah, we've checked all that, so.
Second.
All right, we've, it's been moved and seconded to accept the bids from Fisher Sand and Gravel for the Calbear and Helbling Pits along with the royalty price of two fifty. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
That's all I have.
Thank you, John, for your time. Next, we have Auditor Roan, termination of New Salem Court Services contract.
I was going to say it was a few years ago that they requested to switch all their cases to district court from municipal, but I see it was seven years ago, oh, time flies. So anyways, their city attorney, Scott Solon, called me here a while back and said that they are going to request to take their municipal cases back to municipal court from district court. So I told him to go ahead and have the district court approve it first and then send it here. So they have approved it at the district court level after the city approved it and so we are the last ones to approve it, so that's all I know about it. Unless Al has something to add.
So we just need to, this thing isn't kicking in right away. We just need a motion to accept the.
Approve the.
Approve the termination of the New Salem Court Services contract. Okay. Commissioners, questions or wishes? Does anybody have a motion for me?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the termination of New Salem, of the New Salem Court Services contract. Is that explicit enough?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the termination of the New Salem Court Services contract. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
The next item, which is in your packet, the very last couple pages, is the policy that Cheryl has put together for the public comment that is now required by century code. I think you've all seen it already, she emailed it out.
Yeah.
So we're just looking to see if we can get it approved so we have it in place prior to August first. And that law goes into effect.
And I think we've done a very good job of allowing people to voice their concerns throughout the meeting. So this is kind of just pinning it down to timeframes. You know, there's some leeway in there and everything, but I guess we have, we have to have a policy set by August one, so we need to do that and we can always change policy from meeting to meeting. Policy can be changed and adjusted as necessary if we feel something isn't working. It's not like bylaws that you need annual meeting and two-thirds majority. So I know we've all discussed this individually with Cheryl. If anybody has any concerns or questions about this policy that she's drafted up at this time, like I said, we can change it as we go. If it's not working, let's move it, we'll move it along.
Mr. Chair, just as a point of reference for the City of Mandan, I don't know exactly when they incorporated this, but they put it at the very beginning of their agenda. It's just public input period or the terminology that they use. Public input period where citizens can address the city commission, whatever the topic is, at that time period and from there they go into the agenda. So just, just a point of reference how it could be incorporated.
But, Mr. Chairman, it also says that it can be the previous meeting and the current meeting and then that's it.
The century code states that it had to have been on the agenda the previous meeting or at the current one.
Right.
So it's not.
I'm just referencing how the City of Mandan has.
So it's not really opening it up to any comment. It does still limit it according to century code. The biggest thing I had was trying to put it the beginning or the end or during because some of the comments are germane to a discussion we have where we need information. That's when we should be listening to them, not at the beginning and then coming back and having to rehash some of it because they can't, now we got to have them explain it anyway. That's where I have struggle which, where we put it and how we handle it. And I guess we'll find out how that works as we go.
But they still would be able to comment if it was a public hearing, correct?
If it was a public hearing, regular public hearing that's been noticed and everything?
Yes.
Yes, then, then we open it and they can comment at that point on that agenda item. Other than that, then no, we wouldn't have to take any public comment. If we put it all at the beginning, we could just say that was the time to say your piece and you're done, you're done. Which is, I don't like that.
I don't either, I like to be a little bit more flexible than that.
Mr. Chairman, I think what started this legislation, it started more on the city side across the state, was they would have this public comment period and people would be in the audience, anybody want to talk about anything on the agenda? No, we would talk. Public comment period is closed, especially saw it in the area of planning and zoning. And the policy we adapt here would also have to apply to our planning and zoning board. So when the, then when that project would come up and there would be either people that wanted to speak for or against the project, then those city boards were saying, no, you cannot speak, you missed your public comment period. And then there was a few counties that have taken up that policy. And it was somewhat proposed one time even for this board several years back and I'm the only one left from that board. But it was proposed then that we should do the same thing. But the commission at that time was by consensus went, if that agenda item is called, the people that want to talk about that agenda item, within reason, because it's not a public hearing, should still be allowed to speak and that's how we've been doing it ever since. I also think part of this legislation, and it's just my opinion, was generated by an incident that occurred at Dickinson where a gentleman, this is the time for the public comment, would come to meeting after meeting and talk about foreign affairs and try to tie up the city council meeting, almost try to do a filibuster. To eventually that Dickinson had to have the gentleman removed, but he was at every meeting wanting to talk about things that were just totally outside, off the wall, outside the jurisdiction of the city, outside the jurisdiction of Stark County, outside the jurisdiction of the state. But it started to be used to limit public comment. My personal preference is, is that we have the public comment period at the end of the meeting. Those that want to talk, they can talk about it when their project is up. It will take some comment, but otherwise, I, you know, they could say you can limit it to a half hour, but I can see somebody arguing that too, that they weren't allowed to speak because the half hour was up and they lost their freedom of speech rights. And if somebody did try to filibuster, that's the only thing left on the agenda. So I would prefer to have it at the end. That then we follow the agenda and then at the end is the public comment period. And then they can talk about what's on this agenda or the other one.
Previous one.
Yep, and, you know, or if they felt that they wanted to appeal something from the water board and that was on a water board agenda, then that's probably getting off the rails a little bit. They wait to the end and if it's a busy meeting where we're going to be here for a couple hours, they get to wait till the end to say their piece.
And we still let them talk during the agenda items?
During the agenda item, that's relevant. And if they get up and they, well, I want to talk about this as part of the zoning issue or a road issue and you're talking about gravel budget, so I want to speak now. Well, this is about the budget, you will be allowed to speak during the comment, public comment period at the end and you can tell us everything you want to tell us. So we can keep, keep the meeting moving until the end. At least that's what I see at this point.
Mr. Chair, just want to, again, point of reference for the listening public, where we mentioned about the agenda item being of this, that particular agenda or meeting prior to, it is stated in the policy in that manner. So reference again for those that want to look up the policy. The one in discussion at this time is policy four hundred dash zero zero six, public comment, regular meetings of a public entity, public comment period section, bullet number two, second paragraph and subsection C. Individual also should indicate the agenda topic they intend to address from the current meeting agenda or the previous meeting agenda. And if they're representing an organization or other entity, in additional language. So again, it is part of the policy.
And century code stated in there about having a listing your name, address and all being provided, that hasn't, we didn't do any of that.
Right, which we request anyway.
We request that you come up, state your name and address. But they're saying they need to put it in writing and present it.
Right.
So that, that's on century code, that's not us.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with the cards, I mean, that should be part of it, that helps you control it. And, but then is that question for Dawn, are we going to have to have another?
Stack of recipe cards back by the door.
But if they don't get a, you know, get up with their card or they speak and then they hand you the card and it says Mickey Mouse on it.
They have to present them prior to.
So, and it might be the.
Prior to the meeting being called to order.
Correct.
As, and that's how it's worded in century code, that card has to be submitted prior to them. So you could be sitting in the audience and something pops into your head and we really wouldn't have to accept it.
Mister.
But that's, but we have, so I'm not.
Mr. Chairman, we, we've got to be very careful and I would appreciate when we do have a, a policy we want to implement, that we run it past legal here as well because it's very clear in the, in the law that there are no infringements other than, on, on public speaking, other than what is laid out in that law.
Yep. And I don't think Cheryl went over beyond anything that was in there.
No.
Mr. Chairman, Al, Al, have you read this, have you seen it?
No. I heard about it on the news.
Yeah.
But Cheryl.
Cheryl did not share it with you.
Cheryl has not shared it with you.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's very important that we do that because it's a very, the, the law is very clean. And, but there are states in there very clearly that you can't, you can't shut down discussion other than what is in the law that says that you can do.
Yeah, so what you guys, just the general discussion here, Commissioner Zachmyer, is in number seven, to ensure orderly and efficient meetings at the beginning of each regular meeting, a period of time not to exceed thirty minutes. You would rather that say at the end of each regular meeting, a period of time.
Yeah, I would.
I'm not opposed.
That's just my thoughts.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to beginning, that's why I said I struggled with that beginning. We let them talk when it's germane, the gentleman that come in and talked about garbage disposal and not picking it up when we were talking about a plat didn't fit, you know. We don't let him continue very long.
Yeah, and, and I, my only concern was putting it at the end and I, I never thought of that, but it would be all right on the end except for if someone has a comment on the current agenda that may be pertinent to our decisions.
However, in the course of Roberts Rule of Orders, before that agenda, I'm sorry, before that meeting is adjourned, it can be reconsidered. That's protocol within Roberts.
Someone with the affirming vote.
Correct, somebody with the affirming vote of that agenda item can recall the motion for reconsideration.
Okay, I'll take care of that.
Yep.
So, so that would be Ron's recommendation back to Cheryl and then to, for her writing that was move that to end meetings, the beginning, at the end of each regular meeting. And then also to have Auditor copy, take a look at, Auditor, she, State's Attorney copy, take a look at that, please. But I mean, just see if there's anything you really, I, I've read it, I know fifty times trying to figure out the best way to word it because I thought we were doing a pretty good job to begin with. But if we have to have a policy, let's put a policy there. That's what our legislators decided was best. So with that, we'll move it to, we're going to bring this back in next meeting because we have to approve a policy before August one. And so that's what, we'll see if there's any other things that. And so that's what it will, we'll see if there's any other things that, um, State's Attorney Copy has for us with that too. Okay. Do you have a question, Jackie?
Nope.
Okay. Don, have anything else?
Yep, I, um, I'll probably email out some budget recap sheets, one compilation of everything, cause I just got centrally assessed, um, yesterday. So I haven't worked through their, their huge spreadsheets that I have to go through and get personal numbers on to get those values in there. So once I have those in there, then I'll finish up by compilation of the budget and kind of see where we're at overall and so forth. So I'll, I'll email those out prior to the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Does anyone have anything else good for the order?
I do, Mr. Chair, and this is directed to the Roads Department. I was at a meeting in Elmont on July one and commented by three people in that meeting of how pleased they were of the roads being redone. Uh, I believe it was south of Elmont.
Yeah, yeah.
Did that sound right? Extremely pleased with how it was crowned, how, how well the road was maintained. I advised them to contact your office and give, give your, your staff that direct recommendation, but I just want to pass that on.
Thank you, I'll just give them a little background. Uh, what we've done, south, six miles south of Elmont, we've taken that road and we've pulled all the gravel basically out of the ditches, improved the in slopes, added the crown, and, um, applied water, compacted it. And, um, basically, it's amazing how much gravel is on those in slopes. We got all that up, we didn't even have to add any gravel. We just, after we got done, we, we got it gravelled and, yeah, well, thank you for the, the compliment. I'll pass that on, cause, um, it's been a, a pretty good project going forward. And we plan on doing that a lot more often, because, uh, as I'd mentioned, maybe not this meeting, but other meetings, we are really short of gravel. And so anywhere we can conserve it and reuse it, that's what we're gonna try to do, so. Thank you.
Okay.
Had you scared for a minute, didn't I?
All right, anything else good for the order?
Motion to adjourn.
It's been moved to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion.